Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 15th, 2024 regular City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking, and for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Also, as we are in election season, I'd like to remind everyone of certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comment on ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at a public meeting or during the public comment period. R C W 4217A 555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting or during a public comment period would violate this prohibition. First up on our agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have an open house, the Park at Bothell Landing Conceptual Design Project, Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. right here at City Hall. You can learn about the refined conceptual design for the Park at Bothell Landing. Project consultants will provide details and collect feedback about the park's development. Out and Up, Scaling Your Home-Based or Online Business. You can come learn about that on Wednesday, October 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at City Hall. It's a Bothell Small Business Discussion Panel with guidance for entrepreneurs. We also have Celebrate Orca Recovery Day, Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. or 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. You can sign up to volunteer at a local habitat restoration event to support healthy ecosystems for orca and salmon. We have one proclamation tonight for LGBTQ leaders in higher education. Whereas the 2040 Council Vision states, "For a day or a lifetime, no matter who you are or where you come from, Bothell is everyone's hometown." And to that end, we are thrilled to welcome the LGBTQ Leaders in Higher Education Leadership Institute to Bothell. And whereas the 2024 Leadership Institute's theme of out and authentic is an embodiment of our city's values and vision, one which contributes to a community of trust and respect in which all residents are our neighbors and all of our neighbors are welcome for who they are. And whereas we hope that while you are here, you'll take the opportunity to experience the joyful way of life we have intentionally sought to create in our parks, community spaces, arts and culture centers, and the beautiful campuses who call Bothell home. And whereas we thank you for your dedication to creating safe, welcoming, and inclusive spaces where all people can be their out and authentic selves in communities across the country, and we hope to contribute to that same mission here in Bothell, where we recognize and celebrate all that makes us unique. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the City of Bothell's appreciation for the LGBTQ Leaders in Higher Education Conference and welcome you to the Bothell community. For a day or a lifetime, we hope that while you're here, you feel as if Bothell is your hometown. And I believe we have the UW President-Chancellor Esterberg and the Cascadia College President Murray to accept.
We are very grateful.
We are very grateful, and I have with us here the outgoing president of the LGBTQ Leaders in Higher Education, Rich Haldoppler, who's the president of William Patterson in New Jersey. So I would like to actually invite Rich to say a few words of appreciation.
Sure. Well, thank you for the generous welcome and the proclamation. A lot of this great work goes to Kristin, who encouraged us to come this way, and you certainly have a beautiful city, and I know many of us are looking forward to exploring it, and we thank you for the welcoming nature of this proclamation. And be assured that we'll spread the word about Bothell when we get back to the various places that we come from. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doctors Esterberg and Murray, did you guys coordinate on jacket color before this?
Always.
You match incredibly well. All right. Next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you. We did receive three written comments. The first one from Matthew Rehrman, who wrote regarding the comprehensive plan. Susan Gardner wrote in regarding the biennial budget discussion, and Mark Swanson wrote in regarding climate in Seattle. I do not have anybody signed up to speak live tonight. However, if you are in the audience and you do wish to speak, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Swanson, while you're getting up there, go ahead, and while you're on your way, I will just say that public comments shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, and requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. Suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow.
So there's been some discussion in these chambers about whether or not Bothellites, for people who aren't in places, actually met in person violating the Open Public Meetings Act, which I have photographic screen captures on my computer at home, chose it was.
Mr. Swanson, we'd like you to limit your public comment to current or future council agendas.
You've interrupted me too many times. My lawyer is watching this, and I'm DVR-ing it, so you better be right.
Mr. Swanson?
I'm reclaiming my time. 20 seconds, please. Now, I've sent to the council the fact that BOPUP did meet secretly in person. Let's put that to bed. It wasn't simply a Facebook group. They met during COVID. They've been meeting continuously since 2019.
Mr. Swanson, this has nothing to do with the current or future council agenda?
Yes, it does, because we've been operating without a quorum in city government for five That's relevant. Now, interrupt me again. And I want to point out that harassment is not the level of your voice. It's a legal term. If I want to call somebody a name up there, that's not harassment. You shut me down for calling you names or raising my voice, it's a violation of my freedom of speech, and I will sue.
Mr. Swanson, we do have rules here, and you're not following them.
I am.
So let's hear about a current or future council agenda item, please.
I'm reclaiming 30 seconds of my time because of your interruptions. BOPUP has been meeting in secret. We haven't had a quorum in this city for at least four years, probably five. Now, let's move on to something of substance, shall we? SeaTac has been keeping medium-temperature highs for a long time. Right now, in the city of Seattle, we're 1.5 degrees Fahrenheit cooler by those empirical measurements than they were in 1980. At the same time, the carbon content in parts per million went from 340 to 420, and yet we are cooler now by 1.5 degrees than we were 40 years ago.
Thank you.
That's a fact.
Mr. Swanson, your time is up. Thank you.
I'm going to make sure that...
Mr. Swanson, if you keep talking, that will be creating a disruption in the meeting. We need you to follow the rules, just like everybody else.
If you threaten me with that, I'm going to start talking before the meetings are called to order. And you can't do a thing about that.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Please step to the podium, state your name. Thank you, Judge.
Good evening, everybody. Totally different note, and very quickly, I just wanted to point out to everybody, if you haven't had a chance to come by the court, we have our community garden in full swing, and many of our vegetables are ripe and ready to be enjoyed. So the community court participants have been helping us keep the garden, and it looks fabulous, probably because I haven't touched it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? That's all I have.
Thank you, city clerk. All right. Next up, we have reports. We're going to start with our city manager report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And as you see on your agenda, we do have, we have two more formal reports tonight, one including an outside guest, and we do have, we'll be hearing from Dr. Marie on an update from Cascadia. Before we turn to that, I want to highlight a couple of things that are coming events. We're, we've hit the statistical earliest third Tuesday of a month that we can in terms of, it's the 15th, and our final meeting of October. So I wanted to note two things. One was on your calendar tonight, and that is that tomorrow night here in council chambers, there is an, or excuse me, Thursday, October 17th, in council chambers, there is an open house to talk about the Park at Bothell Landing conceptual design, and it will be between 6:00 and 7:30 p.m. During the open house, our community members will have the opportunity to learn more about the refined preferred conceptual design that we've received so much feedback from, from the community. How much feedback, you ask? We've had numerous open houses and opportunity to hear from the community. So there's been two public surveys, three open houses, three pop-up events in parks, as well as other conversation. People do enjoy downtown park, for sure. So what I want to also share with council tonight, more specifically, is what's the next steps coming out of that open house, is that after the feedback we hear from the community tomorrow night, a refined preferred concept will be taken to the Parks and Recreation Board for final review in the month of November. And then, since, as we have noted a few times, our agendas here at council are a little busy towards the end of the year, you have something to look for in January of 2025, which is that the Parks and Recreation staff will be coming forward in January with a recommendation on a preferred conceptual design for council to review. So you will be seeing that in the first quarter of the year. So I wanted to just amplify that. And then, also, I'd be remiss if we didn't get a chance to just note that in two weeks, we'll be celebrating our beloved Halloween tradition, Trick or Treat on Main Street. It is one of our, I think our second-oldest community event that we have, with the Fourth of July Parade being number one. It'll be taking place on Main Street from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on October 31st, Halloween night, and we are going to be joined by local businesses, community partners, some of our own city staff, and lots of people, both from Bothell and throughout the region, to come celebrate and take a lot of candy off of the police chief's hands. So we, we welcome everyone to come attend, stop by, and celebrate together. With that, I want to turn things over to our first formal briefing, which is, we get to hear the annual report from Cascadia College President, Dr. Eric Murray. Dr. Murray, thank you for being with us tonight.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Thanks for having me. We're back for the annual college report. And just for context, I do this with six city councils and three school districts, but I always start in Bothell, because you guys will be real with me and let me know if I screw it up or not. So appreciate that. I appreciate you being the first audience, and I appreciate being in this hometown. Also, want to say thank you for the proclamation. This group of conferencegoers are over at Paquitos right now, so we are visiting Bothell Business, and they're staying in Bothell Hotels, and we'll have 200 campus leaders on our co-located campus for the next three days. So appreciate the proclamation, and thank you for honoring that. So let's turn to the state of the college. To preview a little bit, when I was here a year ago, I was a tad bit worried. I am no longer worried. So that's the outcome. I went straight to the punchline. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. We're going to talk about successes of the college, challenges of the college, and some invitations for all of you. Next. So successes. Our enrollment is 25% above last fall. During the pandemic, we reached an all-time low. We dropped 45% of our pandemic, but over the last two years, we have fully recovered. We are now at about the same enrollment level as we were in 2017. So we are back to a very healthy place, because our finances are driven a lot by enrollment. So why is our enrollment up so much? We've had multiple quarters of double-digit enrollment gain, 10%, 11%, 12%, but we never expected another 25% to come this fall. So there are a few things that we're doing. One, we got into a grant with the City of Kenmore. We are offering tutoring to high school students to recover some of their lost learning from the pandemic, and that's at Inglemore High School, as well as we're doing some students from Bothell High School. You have to be a Kenmore resident for that, but it overlaps into the Bothell area. So that tutoring is helping. We opened up our Redmond Center. We have classes now going in our classroom down in Redmond. They, this year, are full. In fact, we had zero empty seats in classrooms as of last week. We fully maxed out our availability to teach students. We're also continuing to do student-of-color conferences. This started about four or five years ago with 200 students from the North Shore School District. We now serve over 800 students of color on our campus. They come to visit to learn about higher education from Riverview, Lake Washington, North Shore, Muckeltoyo, and Issaquah School Districts. They all decided to come to us here in Bothell because of what we offer. Next, please. So access is important. Our retention efforts are important. Our mentoring program, which we started during the pandemic, continues to grow. We have over 100 students in our mentoring program who come from historically marginalized backgrounds. Those students retain, stay in college more likely than students who are not in the mentoring program. We have something called intrusive advising, which means every student has to meet with an advisor. Used to be voluntary, now they have to in order to register for classes. So that's helping them stay on track. And we've embedded tutors into our English and math classes, so that there is somebody in the class with them, wallets meeting, that they can take the information after class and help students learn better from that. So there's better pedagogy going on at Cascadia's campus. And so we think, pre-pandemic, we would have 100% of students in fall, 83% of them would stay with us in winter, and then 70% would still be with us in spring. Last year, we went from 100% in fall to 95% in winter to 90% in spring. I don't know if we're going to be able to replicate that, but we almost had a full load of students all throughout the year, which was unlike anything we've ever experienced before. So we hope that these retention efforts are helping. Also on success, is there a post-pandemic rebound? I think we can say yes. The other community colleges are experiencing double-digit increases, but not as great as Cascadia's. We are the leader of the pack in this. The next biggest is down in Olympia, 22%, but most of the schools are experiencing a 10% to 15% increase in enrollment. We know that the economy is difficult for folks, to afford inflation and other costs, and community college is a better option sometimes than going to a full-fledged university. And one of the things that's indicating that folks are taking advantage of the economic opportunity is that our, we have now more than 900 running start students. We've never had this many running start students ever before. And that's an awareness of parents and students and counselors that taking college classes while you're still in high school is a great economic opportunity. Next, please. So what else do we have going on? Many of you were at the grand opening of Innovation Hall last November, and that science building is up and running with UW and going great. We are on the list to get our next student services building for Cascadia called Gateway Hall. I was optimistic that that would, we'd break ground next July, but the legislature's budget isn't looking so hot for us, and we might be calling on city council to help us lobby our legislators. Now, our two state senator, or two state representatives and state senator are all about trying to get our next building on the cutoff, you know, above the line, but I might need some help in doing that. It's probably one of the biggest lobbying efforts I have to see if we can get that allocation this spring, as opposed to waiting another two years for our building to come up again. So I'll come back to you with a request for that formally when we get closer. We opened up our foundation, our nonprofit arm, a couple of years ago. Last year, they brought in over $1 million to Cascadia from people who want to see us do well. So our foundation's doing great. We have a community advisory committee that the mayor has joined us on occasion, as well as the city manager, and that's a group of about 20, 25 people who just come to Cascadia to talk about community issues. That seems to be going well, so we're out there in people's circles. As you can see from earlier today, we have a continued great relationship with the University of Washington, Bothell, and I, I solely think that that relationship is one of the great reasons why we're so successful at keeping our students and getting them onto universities, because we're there together. And then, we also have been offering this Foundations of Equity and Inclusion course, and that's gotten so popular within campus that the King County Public Library has picked it up, some private businesses have picked it up, and they're now sending their employees to us to be trained in the foundations of how you lead an equitable and inclusive workplace. So there are a lot of things outside of student recruitment and student retention that's helping Cascadia retain a presence within our community. Next. So what are the challenges? Well, right now, finding enough instructors. A year ago, as we had too many instructors, now we don't have enough. All of the part-time folks have kind of melted away, and we're trying to recruit part-time instructors. So if you have a master's degree, especially in English or math, we'd love to talk to you, and we'd love to get you teaching at the college, because right now, we had to waitlist people. We had 200-person waitlists for English 101, for example, and we've just pushed them to winter quarter to get that done. It doesn't have to be done in the first quarter, but we are certainly looking for instructors. We're also trying to get the right match for our class offerings in Redmond. We're working with the Lake Washington School District to make sure that the courses there are the ones that their high school students want. And pro, I don't know if it's same in the city, but right now, we have 40 vacancies on our campus and staff, and we have gone to an expedited hiring process that meets legal requirements, but turnover is still a thing for us. People are finding better-paying jobs elsewhere. So we continue to, to work through that. So that's a challenge for us. Also, our facility growth has some challenges. The supply chain issues still tend to be difficult for us to get the things that we need on time. We talked about Gateway Hall and the legislature, and parking. I know you've heard a lot about our parking situation on campus. We now have more parking than we need, but we didn't know that when we built the last $30 million building. It's a good thing that enrollment has picked up, because we were almost at a place where we couldn't pay for that parking structure, because we didn't have enough people using parking. That's changed this fall as well. We'll be able to make our, our bond payments on the parking garage, but that's a joint, shared issue, I think, for both city council and for us to make sure we manage our parking well. Next. So some invitations. This is Cascadia's 25th year of operation. I've been its president, I'm in my 15th year as president of the institution. We are celebrating all year long, and we're having a gigantic party on February 26th. You will all receive individual invites from me. I hope you'll be able to attend where we celebrate 25 years. UW-Bothell was in existence 10 years before the campus opened, but they were in these warehouses across the freeway, and they migrated to the, the grand big campus in 2000 with us. But Cascadia didn't have that warehouse environment prior to 2000. We opened up in 2000. So we're celebrating 25 years, and we welcome your participation in all of our events. If you're interested in joining the mayor at the Community Advisory Council, I'll invite him to invite you to join us and talk about issues that are pertinent to our community. And as I said, I'm going to circle back on our next building to see if I can get, whether it's a resolution, or a letter, or some, if you're down in Olympia, making sure that that's on your, your notepad to talk about how important the new building is for Cascadia. So I think that is the end of my slides. Next? Oh, no, more invitations. Refer possible instructors, English 101, college success classes. And then, if your private business, I know you all have other jobs, or for the city, if we can help you with equity and inclusion, we would love to invite you to preview that course and see if that could be helpful to your mission as well. That, I think, is my last slide. So thank you for the few minutes, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So comprehensive that you're going to send me back to Paquitos.
It must have been a really good presentation, although I see councilmember Dodd making noises.
Don't challenge me not to talk. I was just going to say, it's great. I think you're ready for the other folks that you go in front of, and I really appreciate the heads up on the events coming up and the Community Advisory Council and the potential issues with Gateway Hall. Excited to team together more, so thank you.
I do really appreciate. This council, like never before, has been more supportive of this campus in my whole 15 years. This particular makeup of the council is one that I feel really great about, and I do feel that you support us being in your, in your town. So thank you. All right. Have a great evening.
You, too.
I'm going to not stick around for the rest, if that's okay.
We appreciate having you here, and feel free.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. And I do often, then, as we're talking about anniversaries, I hearken back to March of 2000, when an intern for the University of Washington in the Planning and Budgeting Office named Kyle was over on that campus, previewing it before it opened and helping, they were turning to interns for some of the final punch list items, and it's just always so rewarding to be back in Bothell and visiting campus and hearing from our great leaders there. So thankful for that. We also have an internal presentation tonight. We are going to be hearing an update on the Economic Vitality Plan. This is one of many themes surrounding council vision and priorities that we touch on tonight, including the relationship with campus. So I'm so thankful that we are able to have a campus connection tonight as well. You'll be hearing a little bit more about where we are in our journey for the Economic Vitality Plan development, and at the table this evening is Tony Call, our deputy city manager, along with Ashish Joshi, our economic development coordinator, and I'm going to turn it over to Tony.
Thank you, City Manager Stannert, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. As always, it's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. Tonight, we have no action requested of you. What we do have is an update on our Economic Vitality Plan. If you remember, there we go. If you remember back when we, when you established the council 2040 vision and three-year priorities, one of those three-year priorities, and I'm going to cheat and read a bit here, was to create an Economic Vitality Plan to enhance, to enhance business growth, which includes, I'm going to paraphrase, identifying needs, identification of needs for new commercial space build-out, attract and retain Bothell resident-owned businesses, identify neighborhoods with potential economic generators, establish strategies that will bring us abundant small commercial spaces in every neighborhood, and then finally, strategies to attract and retain large and medium employers. It's quite a broad scope. To that, we have been working on that. So for night, for tonight, we're really here to bring you a check-in and an update on where we are today, knowing that we'll be back in front of you several times in 2025 as we continue to move forward. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Ashish.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. My name's Ashish Joshi. I am the Economic Development Coordinator. To start with, I would like to highlight a statistic. We have 45.8% of the region's economy, measured by gross domestic product, is highlighted by small businesses. So gross domestic product is the measure of goods and services produced, and often an economic indicator of economic strength and economic growth. And the reason why we have this up here is to highlight that our economy is an ecosystem. So we have businesses of all sizes, of all industries, and of all geographies, so within our city and within the region. I would like to start with a overview of our progress and how we're moving forward. So we started in April 2024 of this year, contracting with Echo Northwest, and we used the scope from the council vision mentioned earlier and had a few additions. We analyzed the current conditions and trends of the market. We prioritized broad stakeholder outreach with a focus on both quantitative and qualitative data, and then all of that getting packaged into strategies that align with our city's diversity, equity, and inclusion plan and the overall council vision. From there, we worked on the landscape analysis throughout the summer, and using several data sources, including the Census, Puget Sound Regional Council, CoStar, to name a few, we took a 30,000-foot view of our economy and analyzed the strengths and areas for improvement. Moving to our qualitative engagement, mostly over September, that involved our first-ever citywide business survey. We focused on... over September, that involved our first-ever citywide business survey. We focused on the, getting a representative sample of all our businesses, so businesses of all industries, of all sizes, of all geographies within the city. And the survey was translated into our top two languages, simplified Chinese and Spanish, and we continuously adjusted our outreach approach through the process to address any gaps in response to get that representative sample. We'll go more into that in an upcoming slide. We then are at the point we are right now, so this is the qualitative engagement phase, and this is addressing our final gaps. So on one side, we have a representation gap where we're trying to hear more from our larger businesses, and then on the other side, we want to get deeper into the data and get closer to the root elements of our economy. And all of that is done through one-on-one and focus groups, which are going on right now. Those are, all those elements from the landscape analysis to the stakeholder engagement will be packaged together and synthesized into, first, our focus areas and themes, and then into strategies and actions for the short and medium term. The foundational themes cover our economy today and going forward, and for all those elements, from themes to the strategies, we will be returning to council with a deeper discussion in early next year. We, I mentioned earlier, I was gonna come have some insights, early insights to show all of you. One of the first ones is a reinforcement that our city lines are not economic lines, so the boundaries are different economically, and are, we are a regional economy, so for, there's positives and challenges there, but it ties us to several elements, especially in the workforce. On a second note, on the commercial space side, we covered the commercial inventory look-through that was mentioned in our council priority, and found that we have a competitive advantage in flex buildings. And the advantage in flex buildings is that they can attract a wide variety of industries, and in the longer term, that there are several benefits for economic diversity there. Lastly, going over our, we have, not just locally, not just regionally, are the boundaries not there, but locally, our businesses are spread everywhere. On the map on the left, you can see our larger businesses clustered in Canyon Park, North Creek, and downtown, and a couple, one note there is that our life science industry would be included in the blue, the professional scientific and technical services, and our medical device manufacturing industry would be included in the burgundy. On the right, you see our small businesses are all throughout the city, and an additional note there is that around 80% of our total businesses, according to our business license database, are small businesses. So entrepreneurship is strong in the area. Moving on to stakeholder outreach, we had a wide response on our first-ever citywide business survey. We had a 10% response for comparison. Most surveys, especially government surveys, usually go to 8% to 10%. Business surveys usually have a lower response rate just because of different communication styles, and we again focused on that geographic industry and size representative sample. And we focused on that through, we actively focused on that. First, through a multimodal approach to our outreach, we mailed a letter to every single business, we distributed postcards at events, business meetings, we shared them with nonprofit partners to share, and then, location-wise, staff did business walks to all the neighborhoods, such as Thrasher's Corner, Beardsley, Canyon Park, North Creek, and chatted one-on-one with business owners while sharing the survey and giving background. A few early insights from, a few early raw insights from this survey, the majority of Bothell businesses view Bothell as better to do business than other Puget Sound cities and towns. We were able to confirm on-the-ground data for the workforce statistics that we found in our 30,000-foot view in the landscape study. And then, finally, the majority of businesses are looking to expand, which is something that's an upward trajectory for our economy and our economic sentiment, which is better than regionally and nationally, and something that we can build on. As we mentioned earlier, we're now in the stage of filling those last remaining gaps, one, the larger businesses, and then having the deeper conversations to get to the root elements. Lastly, wrapping it all up, today, we're here to showcase the snapshot of where we are and where we're going toward, and we will return to council for deeper conversations and showcase a little bit more of that whole picture in early Q1 for the themes and late Q1 for the strategies, and then are on track for the adoption of the review and adoption of the final Economic Vitality Plan. Lastly, I would like to thank our consulting partners, Echo Northwest and Lisk Puget Sound. I'd also like to thank teams across the whole city. The positive response in our business survey showcases just the work of our city and our one-city approach, and approach toward exceptional customer service. And lastly, thanking the city leadership steering committee and the council who have guided this effort throughout the whole process. Going back to the beginning, no action is requested from this update. The staff is providing an update on our development of this Economic Vitality Plan. Thank you, everyone, and happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Zornz?
A couple of quick questions. One, this is really fascinating. I wish we could have a cup of coffee and, you know, just chat more about it, but I think that's a little premature, because you need to dive deeper, right? So I have a couple of questions, and I don't need to know the answer, but we'll, except for, I'm curious if we've found out in this initial survey, what, if, were the businesses able to speak to what made Bothell better? And if they did, that can, you know, we can hear that later on when you finalize the report. And then the other was, I was curious about what kind of expansions. Are they talking about expanding within Bothell? Are they talking about expanding out, you know, outside, within the state, outside the state? So those are questions that I'm going to be looking for when that report comes. Thank you.
I think that's it. Oh, Councilmember Aldrichs?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for being here and just being part of guiding this process for the city. We're really glad that this is happening, and it sounds like you're making good progress towards the final plan. One of the slides that I found particularly interesting tonight was about the number of, so it's the workforce slide, the landscape analysis, slide eight, and I'd really love, and you don't have to have answers for this tonight. This is something that I'd love to hear in the future, but what are the reasons for why workers are not also living in Bothell, and are they experiencing any barriers to living in Bothell if they wish that they could live and work in the same town? And so I really appreciate you, you know, asking these questions and being able to help us understand sort of why things are the way they are, and because I think a lot of people in our community want it to be different. And so, like, as we figure out the whys, then we can figure out sort of the strategies like you're talking about. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Kerd?
Thanks, and thank you for the presentation. It's really exciting to get some data and feedback from all the work that you've been doing, so excellent job. It was interesting to hear about the translation of the survey into different languages, which is excellent. I'm hoping to get more information about how business owners or workers from underserved populations respond maybe differently based on our current economic environment and business outreach and, you know, coordination with the city. So hopeful that some of your surveys might be enlightening of that, or focus groups, that sort of thing.
I can touch quickly on that last one. Just, we will be getting more information, but on our approach, had a front-end, back-end of our, in coordination with our diversity, equity, and inclusion team. We have that translation on the front-end, like you mentioned, and we also, in the process we're currently in, are in, having qualitative analysis where we look at unique and additional challenges, but also advantages of BIPOC businesses compared to the broad industry. So an example of that would be for a retail owner that is looking at space or trying to access capital, comparing their experience to others in the industry, and we'll have more to talk about that as we get into the Q1 updates. I'll pass it on to Tony. Good to go.
That's exciting. I know during the development of this Canyon Park suburbia plan several years ago, there was, UW students came to do some outreach to cultural anchors in Bothell, and I'm hopeful that some of their findings are helping you and inform some of the work that you're able to do today. So, great to close the loop on that. Thank you.
Anybody else waiting? I guess not. I think that's it. Thank you so much for the presentation. Looking forward to seeing the conversation continue.
Mayor, that concludes the report section from the city manager tonight.
All right, next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. Councilmember Aldrichs?
I can share a report from the National League of Cities. The Human Development Committee met today, and we approved the final document that is going to Congress about policies that cities are advocating for when it comes to the health and well-being of American citizens, and that has just been one of my favorite things on council, to be a part of. It's been a really fantastic experience volunteering on that committee. I will be going to Tampa next month for a National League of City meeting, and I did ask today, I said, considering they were just hit by a couple of hurricanes, I asked how they were doing, and we are, we are on track to, you know, convention center, hotels, airports, like, they're ready and welcome to, or to welcome us. And then that also reminded me that a couple weeks ago, King Five shared a story of a local Bothell resident, Deb Phelps, who has, for years, served with the Red Cross and went to, went out to Hurricane Helene efforts in the southeast United States, and I just love hearing stories like that, and so wanted to lift up that story and as an example of somebody who, my kids were involved in a youth group a while back, and their motto was, "If you see a need, take the lead." And I just love seeing examples of that in action, so thought I would mention that story published on the 28th of September. So, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Zornz?
I've been hungry for hearing about a Bothell hero, so that was, that was fun to hear. Two, two things comparatively brief. One is, I'm thinking I might be a webinar junkie that the city helps put out. They are fantastic, and yesterday, I sat in on the webinar for beavers, and they're really a lot of fun, so I would like to encourage people when they talk about, there'll be gardening webinars, which floats my boat, but anytime you hear about a webinar that the city of Bothell is a part of, tune in. It's really fun, fun and informative, and it starts to make sense on why the city does certain things the way it does. We had a CTC meeting last week, and we got to tour the new dorms. About 600 out of the 1,100 are filled with folks. We got to hear about the new projects and pipelines. The neighbors would, spoke up and would like parking checked the first quarter. They have things like blocked driveways, and, and they also asked for reminders to go to students about when they're smoking doobie, to go, to not do it in the neighborhood or the cemetery. So, all things considered, that's pretty low drama for, for things going on in the neighborhood with the campus. And their combined population, we heard a little bit earlier tonight, that Cascadia's enrollment is up. Between the two campuses, there are about 10,000 students.
All right. I don't see anybody else, so I am going to take a brief moment to give a report on the fact that it is our city clerk's birthday today. Hi, Laura. And Laura is one of the first people that I ever met at the city, because I applied to a board and commission, and I applied to the Parks Board a long time ago, and when you do that, you interface with the city clerk. And Laura was so kind and generous and just lovely to deal with, and I feel very good knowing that that is how our board and commissioners get introduced to the city of Bothell. So, thank you for everything, and thank you for going above and beyond and being kind to me back in the day, and happy birthday.
Thank you. That's all I'm gonna say.
You could say a few words if you wanted, but no expectations.
Thank you.
All right, next up is projected agenda discussion. All right, in that case, I will, would love to take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
You know, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrichs to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Mermanke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, next up, we have a study session, but we are going to break for 15 minutes. It is 6:48 PM right now, which means we will meet you back down there at 7:03. Welcome back. Tonight, we have one study session left on the agenda. It's a council study session on the proposed 2025-2026 budget and related items. City Manager?
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. So, tonight's meeting does primarily accommodate time for having a conversation about the 2025-26 preliminary budget, and your presentation tonight will be led by me, as well as our finance director, Quan Wong. We're also joined by members of the executive leadership team that are in the audience, as well as a powerful team from the finance department to help Quan and I capture questions as we prepare to come back for more information. Our objective tonight is to introduce the preliminary budget, and we're beginning a series of conversations between now and early December. And as we have those discussions, one of the things that you'll hear me occasionally refer to is that, what the budget document is, and that is, it's a funding plan. And that, it's a funding plan that's then captured in a document, and that's what it's intended to do. As we think back over the last two years, we've seen that play out a little bit, and so, as you have witnessed, plans sometimes change. There's ways for the council to adjust the plan when necessary, and for example, over the past two years, there's been some times where we've done that, including the addition of four firefighters to help staff an aid car out of Station 45 in an effort to improve response times. Also, within the fire department, there was funding that was approved for a training tower at Station 42, which perhaps you saw this weekend at the open house, or as you've been driving by. I got to go check it out on Saturday. Another example is last April, council approved two additional planning positions, which are currently grant-funded, and those positions were intended to add capacity to the community development planning team, specifically to focus on some of the climate action work that, that we are committed to, as well as tree preservation and enhancement. So, those are just three examples of where life brought opportunity, or we looked at what the needs of the community were versus what we had available. And again, funding plans can always be changed when plans change. So we can remember that as we go through. So for tonight specifically, we're opening the conversation, as I mentioned, of what's included in the budget. And this is a pretty long preamble of what's included in that budget. We're gonna talk tonight, I'm gonna share some of the themes with you. And then Kwan is gonna go into more details about what specifically and technically is look, what our budget looks like, just to really help set the stage to capture any questions that you may have. I do want to note, while our study sessions are a very conversational format, I feel like for tonight, it'll be important for us to get through the full presentation before we take questions, even if we need to go back a few slides to get to a specific slide so you can point to, to questions, information. But there are some themes that build on each other. So we'll, we'll move, Kwan will move more quickly than I will through the slides. I think I might set some records tonight, so with apologies. But we, again, what we really want to do is make sure that we get a good foundation set for you. You had an extra, a few extra days to be able to read the budget documents. We want to present it. There's opportunities to speak to Kwan or his team offline to help you prepare for this. And what we'll do is, as we did two years ago, just to set expectations, at tonight's meeting, we'll start collecting questions that council has. And this is not your only time to ask questions too. But as questions are received, we'll be building those into a memory bank or into an attachment where we capture the questions. And some, sometimes the questions will be answered with a written statement or explanation. And sometimes we'll have a notation in there of when it's coming back to council for presentation. But we do that because we really want to ensure that you understand that we caught, we got what you were saying and that we got the right questions articulated. So you can expect to see that and there will be an attachment all the way through adoption of what the questions were, what the answers were. And by the time it is adoption, they should all be answered. So that's somewhat of what to expense, expect. So as we think about where we're at, I also just want to point out that I suspect there won't be a lot of surprises with this preliminary budget. We've had several inputs and they have been part of discussions that we've had at previous council meetings. So thinking back to what some of those major milestones have been is, is that May, we brought back an overview of the community budget survey and that's been available online. We also spent some time on June 11th with a budget overview, talking through some of the financial questions that we were exploring. Some of them are, are answered in this budget. Some of them are still work ahead. One of the council parties is on a long-range sustainable budget. So there are some things that we will continue to work on. But, but that conversation on June 11th helped inform this proposed budget. Also included and very foundational is the capital facilities plan. So that, the capital facilities plan contains work that the city anticipates doing, which then informs what do we need to have in the operating budget to complement each other? So that's part of why we always start with that first and go through the series of conversations because then we can know, all right, with that in mind, what is going to be required in the general fund part, portion of the request for the, the operating budget? And then also, as you'll recall, in September, we had a, an update from Kwan on the revenue forecast of what things are looking like. And again, while Kwan reminded us that he forgot his crystal ball and he still hasn't found it, we are able, in a better position today than we were two years ago and four years ago, to have a better picture of what the forecast tells us about the conditions in Bothell. And while there's always gonna be a variability, I'm remembering back to two years ago, I think on the, on the day of this presentation, we had headlines about a major tech employer who was announcing potential layoffs. And there were some questions of what is that going to do? And we also then, this year, two years later, we have conversations going on about an ongoing strike with one of our major industry partners in the region and some expected layoffs. What I want to reassure council with is that revenue forecast is informed by the fact that there is volatility in the world. And so we don't paint the picture of the rosiest economic picture it can be. We try and look at something that's, that's a realistic picture. And Kwan and I are both unintentionally, I would say, this was not an interview question, but we are both tend to be a little bit more towards the conservative side of, of a rosy picture in that it's always better news to find out that your revenue is outperforming than to have to make difficult decisions. And we've seen other organizations that are going through that. I know you've all talked to colleagues who are having to face that decision and many of you in past years had to make that decision. But Kwan and I are certainly motivated along with the rest of the leadership team here of, of not being in that position. Also informative to the budget has been the council vision. So the 2040 vision that council adopted a couple of years ago, which is, is a great picture of where do we want to go? Where is the council looking to go? So as we developed a funding plan to accomplish that, we can look back and prioritize based on what's the picture for Bothell in the future. So as a reminder, those themes include connecting neighborhoods for one city, economic vitality, we heard a little bit about that tonight, a community of trust and respect, a joyful and healthy way of life, building Bothell's beloved community, environmental stewardship, and moving in and around Bothell. So all of those goals are things that, again, if we needed clarity on where are we headed, that paints a great and clear picture. Also, we're considered where the remaining resources required for implementation of the council's three-year priorities. Those gave a very specific set of instructions of, in the near term, how are we bridging the current conditions of 2022 to the future of 2040? And so we, we looked to those priorities to also identify where are we still needing resources? In addition to that, I mentioned that community feedback from budget surveys, that really aligns well with the vision. The council considered that, that feedback from two years ago as the vision was adopted. I mean, it helped inform our investments as well. So themes such as maintaining roads, the importance of our city parks, trails, opening spaces, open spaces and gathering spaces came up highly. Connecting the city through a variety of travel methods aligned very well with the themes of moving in and around Bothell, they're all on the list. As is the importance of public safety, which in Bothell means a continued investment in fire and emergency medical responses, police services, and of course, our regional participation in the Regional Crisis Response Agency, as well as the recently opened Crisis Response Center in Kirkland, which serves participating communities that are the racer cities. All of those services remain funded in this proposed budget. So speaking of the proposed budget, I want to speak through a few of the other things that you're gonna see. And some of this is in my transmittal letter. It's come up in some of our one-on-one conversations as well. But I want to touch on a few highlights. As I mentioned, two years ago, we had a far, far higher degree of unknown. And as we come off the pandemic, our Five Financial Forecast is a lot more informed now around what is our, what are our revenues looking like between this, what is the sales tax for internet deliveries? What has that done to change, change the conditions in Bothell? As is our, through the pandemic, where in some communities, there is industries that took, had to take steps backwards. We are very fortunate to be such a strong center for life sciences and that, the research and manufacturing in Bothell. Those were things that did not take a pause during the pandemic. And it really helped us set a valuable foundation. And one of the things I like to remind our teams and people out in the community quite a few times is Bothell's the third highest concentration of those life sciences corporations in the state of Washington. So we are only behind the cities of Seattle and then Bellevue, but we're only like a handful of businesses behind Bellevue. So we're close, we're close to second. And when you think about that in terms of what an opportunity that is, is that we have a very stable workforce opportunity in our community that sets us up for a lot of ways of being able to then also diversify our economy. So very thankful for that and want to continue to build upon it. I also want to note that the, it goes without saying, but the 25, 26 budget is balanced. And again, that's a real fortunate position to be in, is that we're not, we're not looking at the math of this budget and saying, we can't figure it out. In fact, we're able to do that and it's based on sound financial policies and decisions of past years from this council two years ago, with, which was willing to take more of a wait-and-see approach as we had incomplete information about what life was gonna be back by post-pandemic. And we've adjusted and we know more information. One thing I also want to share before we get into the details that Kwan will, will go over is a little bit more about how this budget was developed. So we went into the budget with the expectation that, that from a, as our departments and programs gathered to look at what the needs were going to be, the instruction was is to assume a no-growth budget. So meaning no additional funding. As you'll see though, that's, that's not the end of the story. So what we, what we instructed was, if there is a need for new funding, we want to, want you to look at that need with, through two, two lenses. The first one is, is that we want to find a way to pay for what needs to be done through existing council-approved policy for how we operate the organization. So what does that mean? That means look to reprioritize within existing funding sources before asking for anything new. So some examples of what that might looks like is we had a, or some exceptions to that. There was a couple of drivers of where the increases might be. One is that there was a cost of living adjustment for 2025 and we anticipate cost of living changes for 2026. These scenarios were greatly helped. We had a little bit more clarity on what that would look like through council-approved policies around approved floors and ceilings and our labor agreements, which then extends to all employees. Also, medical benefit increases have gone up. City insurance premiums increased about $1.1 million. So some of these things are, are commitments that we have that we, we need to work through. The next thing was, was through new funding requests, as I was starting to say, any new request that was above and beyond existing funding outside of the, those cost of living medical expenses and the city's insurance had to be then identified specifically. And that is why I hope that you have some better clarity of what are the changes in the budget by reviewing attachment one in tonight's packet. What you know from that then is, is that any, any other changes that are going on were trade-offs that were made within existing resources. And then anything that's above that, you have a crosswalk available to you. That's attachment one. Some examples of how that may have played out. So I'm gonna, first, I'll, I'll thank our IT team. There was a pretty significant Zoom client update last week. And so we had one of our IT professionals here tonight, just in case. Like this is our first show and it's the budget night, we're gonna make sure the show goes on. But vendors do make the updates from time to time, but they also will update our licensing and support costs every once in a while. So in an example, this is a hypothetical, but if there was such a program and let's say licensing and support went up 10% for 2025, instead of just building that into the budget, what departments were instructed to do was to first look at the existing budget to find the equivalent need to reprioritize, which might mean that we need to lessen our IT portfolio and stop paying for something so that we could, we could focus more on leveraging the technology that we already have in place and getting more use out of the functionality. So that's the first place that we would look, is trade-offs before there would be any new revenue requests. If we saw something where similarly, if maybe it's not a contract, but there was something that based on community feedback, council priorities, or even just responding to the growth of the community, we looked to reprioritize there as well. If there was, if there was something that fell outside of that, what happened next then was, is we were, we asked teams to come up with a proposal of what new investments did they need then? Again, and how did they relate to some of these things that we're talking about? How do they respond to council vision? How do they respond to a specific priority? So, and then those were individually submitted, weighted, and I was able to receive a recommendation from our executive leadership team of what are the things that rose to the top? And looked at that, made a few small changes, and that's what's before you tonight. Some examples of where that comes in, that you'll see within the list in attachment one, there's an investment in communication and engagement for citywide messaging. What you'll see in that more specifically is a conversion of a limited-term position as well as an increase of one and a half FTE. These are proposed to all be within the executive office so that we have the flexibility then of meeting what are the messaging needs for our community, no matter which department might be related or in the lead position of that message. So as we have things coming up, also council parties, like a Parks Pros Plan update, there will be engagement needs, other projects as well, or greater outreach on construction and development projects of our community wanting to know more, we'll, we'll have the resources to communicate that. Another communication and engagement-related priority is around how do we educate the community around our trail system and interpretation of what people are seeing? So again, how are we supporting those? So positions in this case are really there to add capacity to do the work that needs to be done for the city. So we're looking at what are the needs, what's the work, and then how are we gonna fill that, whether it be through a contracted service or through a position? We'll also think, see things like investment in maintaining our facilities. We want to make sure that we don't wait till things are breaking before we maintain them. But also to invest in infrastructure upgrades for EV charging stations with council. Council has recently heard from the results of our EV study. We've had a, we have a request for a conversion of a temporary position for the municipal court to a regular position and able to support the ongoing processing of infractions related to school zone enforcement programs. We also, as noted in the attachment, there is an investment to support policy development and exploration of a police body worn camera program. And to be clear, I want to make sure that it's noted that this is not to then start deploying cameras. This is to do the upfront work to bring back to council for your approval of, do we have the right policy? Do we have the right process? And does this reflect the work of, of the city? And also within that funding, there's some outside expertise for policy development. There's some outreach. There's also some project management within the executive office, which is, again, while police is in the title, police body worn cameras, when you start looking at what are the number of functions within the city government and our external stakeholders who have feedback for deployment of a program and making it successful? You think about the, the education and outreach that needs to take place. Think about our IT professionals and who have to support the equipment. We think about our fleet and facilities teams of, these are devices that go somewhere and also are out and about. So we have a, we have, we have legal needs. The list goes on. We have a financial need. So we, we've looked to, to add a resource to help coordinate that from the city manager's office. You'll also see enhancement to storm and surface water capacity with a focus on council priorities of environmental stewardship and ensuring that we have systems that protect our native habitats. Also, we're included in the recommended approach to building upon council priority for a long-range plan for budget stabilization, which you'll see, and Kwan will touch on more in terms of a proposed reserve policy for council to consider. So we've looked for, we've looked for a strategy that would work for that. So lastly, before turning things over to Kwan to go through more specific items of the budget, I just want to note a couple of other elements of things. So we are, on behalf of the organization, well, thankful to the city council for including in your priorities, clear policy direction with an area towards the future and long-term planning for this community. It was extremely helpful and I think it really changed how we went about the work of bringing you something. And I hope it's reflected in the preliminary budget of, it doesn't have to be a perfect document. There will be changes, there will be updates. In fact, there are some things in here that are just a document. It's not, it's this wrapper that goes around the budget. So there will be some narrative or some, some language that we may have missed that we need to update and that sort of thing. But ultimately, what we really want to deliver to is a proposed funding plan that meets the needs, expectations, and the feedback that we've gotten from council, not just in these next month and a half, but over the last two years. There's also, there are also trade-offs that have been considered, but ultimately, those trade-offs have been really guided by how do we want to bridge today's realities to the needs of tomorrow? Second thank you is I want to thank city staff who make this possible. We've all heard of things that go on in communities and we've, again, probably experienced them in our past. And our goal is to not be in that position. But when you don't have a well-run city and you don't have staff who are providing exceptional service, your focus on where you need to invest becomes very targeted because you have a list of things that people are saying, fix this now. I, not a day goes by that I am not thinking, and I often share in private conversations, but I want to highlight it publicly, that it's not lost on me. The reputation of our organization and of this city really does come down to the individuals that we have out-serving in the community visibly in some of the worst moments and some of the best moments as well. But that work of the city goes on 365 days a year, 24 hours a day and seven days a week. And I'm so thankful for those ambassadors who really are out-serving the community so we get the feedback about how many people would recommend Bothell as a place to live. And we see the innovative things that are happening and we're able to talk about, we're able to talk around the margins in a budget, budget conversation. And we're able to talk about we're able to talk around the margins in a budget budget conversation and not facing what is a glaring glaring challenge that is difficult to solve. I also just would acknowledge, though, too, that it while that's who is seen, that can't be done without the support internally, too. We need partners who are doing things like negotiating and reviewing contracts to make those projects that are happening out in the public possible. We need people who are designing those projects. We need people in GIS who are mapping our assets to GIS locations so we don't we don't lose sight of ourselves. We need to keep our systems running. We need our finances balanced. We need audits passed. And we need to make sure that our team is strong and equipped with the training and education they need to make sure that Bothell is a welcoming community. So we open the meetings with tonight, and as we your your vision statement opens with is that we want for day or lifetime, we want Bothell to be everyone's hometown. So again, that puts us in a position where we can make adjustments. So with that, I'm gonna turn things over to our finance director, Kwan Wong, whose team has been instrumental in navigating this through this development of a preliminary budget. And again, is going to be tracking your questions so we can bring back better information for you the next time we have a conversation on November 5th. With that, Kwan, it's all yours.
Thank you, Kyle. Those are really great words, really word of encouragement for for all of us. So for tonight, I'm going to give you really the overview of the proposed budget. And then we can do some deeper dive with collecting your questions, either again, in person or in other conversations. But again, as Kyle said, this is a balanced budget. And this is important to say because we are required by R C W to say that. But that's the technical piece. Also, for the balanced budget, we are not just looking at the next biennium. When the executive leadership team under the direction of the city manager, we're looking far into the future. So for the next two biennial, we are balanced. We will have some tough decisions to make, including, you know, the new investments, but those are policy choices. Technically, again, we are balanced, but there will be policy choices. And those may be difficult conversations, but we are here to help you make those decisions. So overall, the citywide expenditure is about 380 millions for the next two years, 208 million in '25 and 171 million in 2026. Focusing on the general fund because this is the portion where you have the most flexibility. So for for that portion is about 164 millions that we are investing, 82 million in 2025 and the same amount in 2026. New investments, some of them are one time, but many of them are ongoing, including into the next biennium beyond this one. So they are totaling $4 million in 2025 and 3.7 million in '26. Again, in other slides, we'll go into a little bit more details and definitely answer your questions if any. So citywide by functions, this is kind of my favorite chart because this is really explaining what we are about. If you recall, for the majority of our expense, 28% of that kind of in the dark gray area is the capital infrastructure. That's about 91.5 million dollar for the next biennium. Those are investment that are not just for the next biennium, but into the future, maintaining our streets, maintaining our roads, and building our parks. That's where the majority of our investment are going to. The next area is the green area. That's public safety and 26% or about 86 million dollar in the next biennium. So I want definitely to highlight that because that's where I feel like we are making the right choices along with the executive leadership team. Other areas, the 19% is what we call the physical and economic development. Those are your parks, those are your community development, those are your economic development activities. So again, we are investing our programs and services, serving our community. Transportation is about 7%, but we also have capital investments. But if you look at general government, it's really about 14%. If you say, what is our administrative cost? Oh, that is your 14%. Simplifying everything, that's really what we are supporting the entire city. So the next slide is about the silly wide revenues by type. Again, we are supporting the 380 million dollar. And this is really the pie chart that is going into or we are collecting in order to support our expenses. Again, the majority of our funding is for the general fund or from the general fund, 154 million dollar or 47%. That's the top percent of our general fund revenues. The other one is rates. If you look at the utility funds, that's 57 million dollar or 17%. The other kind of equivalent to that is our capital funds, our CIP, CFP projects. That's about 56 million dollar. So people will be likely focusing on the general fund. So I have a slide breaking that down into revenues by type. The majority of that again is sales tax. It's about 41 million dollar or 28% of our total general fund revenues. The second area is property tax. That's 35 million dollar or about 24% of that. I will be asking you in this budget to raise to take the 1% to exercise the 1% option. The third area is charges for services, about 24 million dollar or 16%. That's your permit review fees. Those are similar to what we do for the public. We charge, we are trying to charge a cost recovery for that. One every one revenue that I want to highlight, which would not be making this pie chart many years ago, is the other miscellaneous revenues. That's about 13.4%. About 7 million of that is coming from our interest earnings. So I mentioned that about two months ago. So we are still holding that assumption that we will be collecting that amount in the next biennium. So moving on, so this is about expenditures by type. We spend close to 80% of our budget on personnel. That's paying wages, salary benefits. And the other part is maintenance and operation, and that's about 21%. For general fund, we don't do a lot of debt and debt service. That's paid for from other sources. But if you are talking about in the past, unfortunately, when we had to cut budget, we have to talk about personnel. That's where the majority of our budget is being spent. So in this case, we are making investments, and and most of those are wage and salary and benefits related. So that's where we are going to be focusing on in in our discussion for the for the new investments. Okay, this is a chart that I think many of you are familiar with. In the finance department, we call this the Koishman projection, for lack of better word. We want to revise this and make it better. But right now, as I mentioned before, as Kyle said, we are honoring, we are following the council's instruction that we need to develop a long range budget being stable. So with this, if you look at the fund balance from '24 on, we do have a healthy fund balance. But we are spending a portion of that along with revenues. So as the cost of surface increases, the gap will be lower and lower. That means the our available resource to spend will be narrower. But at the same time, we are making conservative assumptions. So many of the revenue assumptions, things can change. And we are being conservative and not making any really rosy projections. So this chart in the future years may reflect our conservative approach to our projection. So we can talk more about this chart, but we will be able to maintain the city's budget as a balanced budget beyond this biennium. So the investment that we are making, Kyle already talked about that, so I'm not going to go through the details. But to highlight some of them for the general fund in 2025 is about 2.53 million dollar. The non general fund portion is about 1.55 million. We talked about, as always, this is one city, one budget. So we will maximize our resources, both from general fund and non general fund to move the city forward in our investments. So I'm not going to go through some of the highlights that Kyle already presented. But the next slide, I definitely want to touch base because they are part of our budget proposal. The first one is safe streets and sidewalk levy. As you may remember, the levy will be expiring at the end of 2025. So as a short term strategy, we are proposing that we will use the fund balance in the levy to maintain our street MNO. That's about 5.57 million dollar. So we are also making recommendations that we will delay some of the capital projects that was identified as part of the levy package. We will be presenting options to replace the expiring levy to council by the second quarter of 2025. All options are on the table. Some of them, again, with any policy choices, you have benefits. You also have costs. Who's paying for the levy, who will benefit? And whether we should spread the burden beyond the property owners onto people like me? I buy lunches here, but I do not only home here. So so again, it's about equity. So we'll talk about that when we present the options to you. The next one day or a lifetime, and I'm still enjoying my everyday here. So the next policy choice is the budget stabilization fund. Again, that's to your credit, that about four or five years ago, due to the sales of the surplus property, you put aside 3.5 million dollar into this fund, and we never touch it. At the same time, according to the Moody's Financial Rating Agency, we have never added to that fund. So if you take inflation into account, our fund balance is actually decreasing. So again, to strengthen our financial position, we are recommending adding $250,000 a year in perpetuity until we reach a goal. We'll talk about that more. And we want to establish a 10% fund balance. We are almost there with your 3.5 million dollar in in the budget stabilization fund. But it is time to add to that part of money. In the budget, we're going to propose amendment to the name of it and then put additional restrictions so that it is only available for future emergency events. The third area is kind of a technical adjustments. We are transferring 4.6 million dollar from the upper remaining fund balance to the general fund and set it assigned as a fund balance for remaining projects and stuff and approved already by the city council. This is a technical adjustment. So this is in order to continue the usage of the money, we are making this adjustment. The fourth area is the 1% property tax. As I mentioned before, we are recommending the 1% that we will exercise the 1% option. That's the statutory limit, and we want to continue to to exercise that. This is for both our city levy and also the Snohomish Bothell Emergency Medical Services. And the other two areas that will be coming back to the council. The first one is or the next one is the Human Services Grant Allocation Methodology. So we are preparing options and present to you on November 5th, the budget study session in terms of options that you can explore.
And just to put a little more context on that, the Human Services Committee, of which three members are here tonight, had a discussion at their last meeting around looking at the allocation funding, much like Kwan mentioned of our budget stabilization fund, a fixed rate as opposed to a percentage or it's some other method starts changing. What one of the conversations that was being had was around right now, that methodology is the the population times eight dollars. So for example, coming back with analysis of what would it look like to apply the cost of living increase that we apply to other things within the budget to that eight dollars? And so we could be predictable and build that into the assumption so that as a funding package comes back to the council every year, it's it's keeping up with the rate of inflation. So our Human Services Coordinator is doing some additional research on some options and doing an environmental scan of the region. And that's what we'll bring back within the study session of in addition to starting to answer questions that council may bring up tonight. That's one that we've plugged in and are committed to coming back early to get your feedback.
The next one is the 2025 fee schedule. In most cases, we are just recommending a cooler adjustment by about 3.6%. We have three exceptions. We cannot increase fees that are limited by statute. And in Park's department's case, where market consideration exists, we would not raise our fee. And the last piece is, again, this is mostly related to the community development fees. They conducted a cost analysis and determined some of the fees should have a non CPI adjustments to maintain cost recovery. So we will present those to you in a future meeting. And then the next one is about the 2025, 2031 Capital Facilities Plan. The is a seven year plan, and it is a 440 million dollar package. This is no small number, as I mentioned to you last couple of times. We are making some major investment, 92 projects in total, to make sure that our infrastructure is maintained so that we can sustain what we have for future generations and and community members. I'm also, you know, want to and proud of our city staff. Over half of that, 51%, is funded by non city sources like grants. I mean, they are incredible in getting federal and state grants, so I congratulate them. And also funding from our partners like Sun Transit. So so this is what we will be proposing for our CFP packet. The next area is the utility rates. We have presented to you in many study sessions. And Public Works had worked with a consultant firm to study their rates. So you were So you were briefed by their findings. So we are recommending 625% for water, 4.25% for sewer, 5.75% for storm. But one major kind of a policy adjustment is, it's also a legal requirement now. We are removing the 5.15% water utility tax that we are currently funding the hydrant maintenance. We will no longer do that and then transfer the amount to the rates. So it is going to be paid, same thing by the tax, the rate payers. It's part of their billing, so it's not, it's not going to be an effect on their bills. And then if you consider the 11.11% with a corresponding decrease of 5.15%, so the net increase is only about 6.25%. So we are going to be able to meet a legal requirement as well as maintaining our hydrants. Okay, this is kind of our budget schedule for the next few weeks, next two months. So for the next big meeting is the shortened study session because of the election night. So we will respond to council questions and your requests. So we will be taking notes from what you are about to say and all the questions that you are about to ask. And then on September, on November 12th, we will have a public hearing. Those are required by law, by statute, so we need to have those public hearings, and we'll get the notices out. We will have another study session, again, to respond to city council questions and requests. November 19th, we need to adopt several ordinances and resolutions. And most importantly is the 1% levy rate and the EMS because we have to turn in to the county assessors before the November. This year is earlier because November 30th falls on a Sunday. So we need to make sure that we comply with this statute. And then we'll talk about the financial policy update. That's your, what we are proposing to have a Budget Stabilization Fund. So that's a policy discussion. And then also another opportunity to respond to city council questions. And then the final night is December 3rd. We'll be asking you to adopt the 25-26 budget, the seven-year CFP, the fee resolution, and also the 23-24 mid-biennium housekeeping budget amendments. So that's the plan. We will hold December 10th, just in case if we have any spillover. So as we said in the beginning, today is just introduction and overview of the proposed budget and all the related items. We are asking council to identify questions and areas for further exploration at upcoming November meetings. So we're happy to have a conversation with you.
I was gonna say, happy to, we normally say happy to answer questions, and we will, like, if there are some. Kwan knows a lot, so he may have answers, but more importantly, we do want to make sure we capture the theme so that we can bring back the right information as opposed to shuffling people up at the table. So we may be taking a lot more notes than we are responding, but we hear you. So with that, somebody gets to, you get to start choosing your own adventure of what November looks like, and we'll do that now.
Sounds good, thank you. It sounds to me like you are happy to take questions, and you'll get back to us on most of them. And that is, that's, I think, the best we can ask for. Because, yeah, some of these, some of these questions take some work on your end. I don't have many. I think this was a really useful overview of, you know, revenues, expenditures. That's right, the credit goes to our finance director to provide, I think, the public as well, because it's not just the seven of us here that are taking in this information. I hope that there are people at home who are trying to study and understand how their local government operates and functions and how plans are made. So I'd like to think that it is a benefit to the whole community to be able to hear presentations like this, so thank you. I don't know what slide this was, but, no, I don't have a question about that. It's the revenues that are projected, the projected revenues slide. Can you offer a little bit more explanation for, almost there? Looking for it too. I should have written the slide number down. Nope. That one, there we go. Why are you projecting a decline in the general fund? Can you explain some of the details of why those projections look like that?
So, again, this is about the fund balance, it's a general fund balance. So it is a combination of expense and revenues. So at this time, we are being very conservative in our so-called general fund revenue projections, like your sales tax, your other property tax. We will have options available in the future, but at least at this time, we are not proposing any new revenues or any increases of our revenue options. So again, this is why we are projecting the way it is, and expenses are also going to be on the increase because of just mayor COLA.
And Kwan, I know this is general fund related, but are there anything, like, are there expiring revenues that come out of, in our projections? I may be, I may be reading this wrong, but.
So it does not include any of the levy programs.
Perfect.
So, but if levies, yeah, so that's a simplified picture of our so-called general fund fund balance projection.
Thank you.
Oh, you've got your fund balance, yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's possible, because what we project and what becomes reality are often very different things. And I know that this type of a graph has been provided to councils, you know, and in budget sessions long before we came around. And so I'd be really curious to see, you know, 2022, 23, 24, if we could look at the projections that we saw and see how they differed from reality.
Absolutely, and I was looking at the presentation from two years ago, for example, and where we were two years ago, we were projecting, basically, this is a line-crossing exercise, and we were seeing the lines cross midway through 2026. So we were getting, we were in our current biennium, and then most of the way through the next biennium. And so again, as we see, like, while the, while the levels of the general fund balance are going to change over time, what we are seeing is the ability of, we're seeing that creep further out into a couple of bienniums, and it is something that then we're cognizant of as we think about what are the choices that we're making.
Great, thank you. That is the extent of my questions.
Quick question, piggybacking off that. Does the, like, roughly $5 million difference in the general fund balance between 2024 and 2025, does that mean we're using general fund balance to fund, to balance our budget over the next year?
So it's a combination of revenues and fund balance, and the answer is yes. We are trying to use some of the fund balance left over by, in the previous years. So those are carried forward into the 25, the beginning fund balance of 2025.
Cool.
I have just a couple of quick questions. I had to give myself a little talk that we're talking about just two years, not 10 years. And the cross, the thought went through my mind is, as our population rises, our first responder costs are going to rise, but we don't, unless if we have some major explosion in the next two years, we don't have to really worry about that problem two years out of our, upping our first responder costs. So that's, probably, you cross that bridge when you get to it and then go, the need is great. Future councils down the road go, would say, we now see a need of being able to, we need to up our first responders, build that extra fire station, et cetera. So, so I guess I have just one question. Is, why is water and sewer a 60-day reserve instead of a 90-day reserve?
Great question, and that's why we are, the first six months when I got here, I had a chance to review all the reserve policies, and this is one of the areas that we'll be addressing. But in order to increase the reserve, that means also raising the rate. And at this time, we, we want to balance out between being, again, in a good reserve position versus the impact on rate payers. So it's the future versus the current rate payer burden.
Right, and this is something that the rate payers have to pay and to support, so that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
I see that we're adding, potentially adding more full-time employees. Which is exciting to be in a growth state and helping to spread some of the administrative burden and communications. That's exciting. But I'm hoping to get some clarification on ensuring that decisions we make to expand the organization are sustainable long-term. So I'm thinking pensions, I'm thinking, are these like externalities of staffing costs built into your projections? And I'm sure they are, but I would like to hear it from your mouth.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So all of those include step increases, benefits. We are, again, making a very conservative assumption, like, what would be the COLA increase? What would be the insurance premium? Again, we are making all those assumptions, and they are included, not in, not just in the next biennium, but in all the future expenses.
That's great.
It's all built into this model.
That's great. The other question I had was about the ARPA fund transfer. I'm a little unclear on what we've already spent our, some of our ARPA funds on, and I don't know if there's a webpage that we have somewhere floating around or if that's in a, buried in a budget document from two years ago, but.
We can definitely give you the spreadsheet. We do run reports on a quarterly basis, and we report to the US Treasury. So we definitely will give you the latest quarterly report, how much we spent and how much is still in the fund balance.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
Yes.
I'll also note for interpretation on attachment one is that, so your city manager is simple, and so I like to have general rules as opposed to customizing it based on things. So you'll see in year one of, when there is a proposal of a staffing position, even if it's a conversion of a limited-term position, we make the assumption of that, that positions won't be filled on January 1st. It takes some time. And so there's a lesser cost in year one than there will be in year two, and that's partially because of that, it'll be a full year. Now, of course, some positions will be filled quickly. Some positions are more technical in nature, and the recruitments may be difficult, and Matt's team's gonna be working hard, and it'll take longer. But overall, the presumption is, is it's gonna average out, sort of the bottom line. So just as you, as you look at then the costs too, in terms of the fully, the full loaded costs with everything built in that Kwan reassured about, that's why you also see a larger curve between year one and year two.
I have a long list of questions. I will send them via email, if that's okay. Otherwise, we'll be here till 12.
And we will then put those into the future, so everybody, like, the benefit of knowing questions. So just to reassure anyone who says, but I want to hear all these questions.
Yeah, yeah. The, the biggest, the biggest question I have, two questions. One is, you kept emphasizing balanced budget, balanced budget. Does that mean, can you define what that means? I guess I don't want to say what it is, because as you said, there's a legal requirement, but then there's, I'm sure there's an accounting definition for it too. So what does that, well, okay.
So that means, again, in the next biennium, we are making a proposal to spend $380 million in our expense account. So that means we have to come up with $380 million to fund that package. So that is a balanced package. But we also have our own reserve. So we're not spending every penny that we have. We still have money in the reserve, so both restricted and restricted. So that's, that's the so-called balanced budget. So meaning, I have to pay my mortgage, and I need a job to pay my mortgage. But at the same time, I also have a saving account. So I'm not spending the saving account on my mortgage, so I'm trying to balance my budget. So I, I hope I have this job to pay my mortgage, so that's a balanced budget in my own household account. But I also have a saving account, right?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what that, that means. Thank you. If the budget is balanced now, the question from the beginning is, you, we talk about balanced budget, but then next year, there will be things, oh, things, things that will come up that will require us to come and revisit. Are you gonna run through another rebalancing exercise when new things come up that require a biennium or a mid-biennium update, if at all?
That's a great question. So this is a true two-year budget. So within that two-year budget, directors and staff, we are giving them, you know, their maximum, maximum ability to manage their budget. That's our job, right? I mean, we can reprioritize resources. So unless there's a major change or major event, we would not be coming back to you for any mid-year budget amendment. But there are occasions like that. I mean, just like for every year, toward the end of the year, we need to balance things that we did not anticipate. So again, we will come back with mid-biennium adjustments. But at the same time, we, as directors, I manage my budget. It's a two-year budget.
Okay. To give, so Kwan doesn't have to speak to himself too. You will see sometimes where there's a philosophy of, it's almost like the mid-biennium is its own budget process. So there's a lot to consider. And Kwan has been very good at giving the direction of, we have a biennial budget process. Let's make sure that we're projecting what are the needs for the next two years. So he will allow exceptions when there's exceptional circumstances. But by and large, what you should expect is, anything that comes back at the mid-biennium for adjustments are going to be unanticipated.
For example, you used the BodyCam example, which requires, you know, a process. Does that mean the actual purchase of the hardware and, you know, the servers and all that, that's already taken care, taken care of in this next?
No, so we did not, we did not want to get ahead of any policy direction that we have. So what's proposed in here is an investment of developing the policy both, in both years of what is it gonna take to explore that? At any time, if council gives direction of stop, then we don't spend more of that money. But there, if we were to look at, let's say, a project plan of what we know today in terms of what would it take in terms, at a timeline to get to the point where we are buying the hardware and the equipment and deploying, we would be looking at somewhere in the third or fourth quarter of 2026. And so that's where you see, do see an investment in both '25 and '26. That is all for preparatory work to make sure that we have the funds covered, to be able to answer the questions, address the community, and provide the council any information that you ask for. And then if we, for the example of, with, with adjustments, if we did need to make an adjustment, the council can appropriate money at the time of, if you decide to move forward and say, we would be looking to make that investment, we'll come back to you if, based on the program and how is it scoped, what's gonna, the cost's gonna be. Then council can make the funding decision at that time. But we're, we're prioritizing the policy decision first.
Assume we say yes, so I just want to understand, next year, something has to go for us to bring this in, right? Like, I need $2 million. Chief comes, says I need $2 million to make this happen. Like, $2 million has to come from somewhere, otherwise we have to raise the funds. Or a grant, well, as I say, it has to come from somewhere. So is that gonna, the process that we'll have to go through as well?
Correct, and chances are, much like staffing positions, we don't, we look at, when, when would the impact be? So. So that year one, if, if we were looking, again, if council gives the direction, then there would be deployment in 2026, we would look across the organization. We would look at, again, I mentioned fleet facilities IT, we'd look at the court, we'd look at what are all the places where there's a resource needed to support that program and we would come up with that cost. Chances are for 2026, it's not going to be a full cost because it's going to be later in the year. But certainly when we're here two years from now, we'll be having a conversation of what would be the, the investment needed for 27, 28. And again, that should hopefully be no surprise to you because we'll have already identified some of those things. So that'll be part of the decision-making and direction from the council. And again, part of what makes that difficult to project before we've done the work of a policy is, is we need to come up with what are the, if, if that's something the council wants to explore, what are the circumstances of when, when are cameras on, when are cameras off? That'll, that'll inform how much storage there is, that sort of thing. So we need to look at if there's an intent to use cameras, how would that be? And then we can use that to better project out what the operating costs would be.
I use as an example because it was mentioned, so it's not like, for example, if we want to place a dog park, something comes up next year and we decide we to put it somewhere, that go through that exact same process that you just, across the whole organization departments, see what's needed.
We would look at what are the resources needed? We would look at options. That's where we have, that's where you look to, to staff to come up with the recommendations of what are funding sources? Are there external funding sources for the international dog park grant that we can go after? Or is it something that we're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to cover with it? So we'll bring in that, that fiscal analysis section of your agenda bill, there should be an answer to that question for anything that comes up that's an opportunity that's not anticipated today.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ben. Sorry.
Yeah, Councilmember Manki. Thank you and thank you to staff for presentation tonight. I think I asked most of my questions to the city manager this morning, but my one question from tonight's presentation is around the three and a half million dollars in the budget stabilization fund. It was mentioned that the purchasing power of that money loses strength over time and, which is totally understandable. I'm curious, do we invest that with the rest of the city's fund pool? And do we, do we earn interest on that to help combat the, the inflationary drawdown on it?
Yes, and yes. So the $3.5 million is sitting in our investment account with the state and also with our Wells Fargo bonds portfolio. So they are earning interest.
That's a great question. Yeah, that's a great question and then to inform the conversation about how do we, how do we grow that over time is that currently the policy is three and a half million dollars. So that's where we're looking to change the policy. So great, great question and sort of a part of how we're looking at, how do we grow that fund?
Perfect, thank you. That's all I've got tonight.
One more question is the, I have it written here, but I will ask it, in your finance, the department policies. And I went through, I skimmed through it, but then I saw something called financial reporting to council, not, you know, the hardcore technical stuff you do for, for auditing. But, but we haven't had one in a long time. Are we going to start having regular updates on, you know, we approve a budget?
Right.
How are we doing type reports?
Yeah, we can either submit that in a written form or present that in a council report verbally.
It'll be, I think it'll be nice to have something, maybe a staff report or something just to have a, because you know what's missing from this thing also now that I'm thinking about is like, how have we been done in the past two years?
Yeah.
And what, because you guys have stuff which you use as inputs.
Right.
But then we don't have visibility into how have we done in the past year and then what are the assumptions that went in? Like so that we'll be on the same, at least high level knowledge as, as you do.
We'll do that.
Can I second that request?
Yeah. I think we provided an annual year-end report, but I think the quarterly, I think we, we should practice that.
Yeah, quarterly is fine. We don't need to do it any, I mean, just like having businesses, quarterly business reviews or whatever, it's like, yeah, how are we doing?
Great.
And then we can adjust accordingly. Then when I request for a, you know, the international dog park grant to come in, you know, we know that it's coming because we've already reviewed it, we know costs, you know, we know these things, right?
I'm just over here wondering like, what organization would give out the international dog park grant? Like who would administrate, administer that? I don't know.
Obviously the International Dog Park Association.
Oh, okay, fair. Sorry, it's late, I'm slow. I'll go. When I first got the packet, like, you know, I went straight to like, hey, what are we adding? Before I circled back and read the rest and was kind of going through and thinking, okay, well, do we really need that? And, and then I realized like, I have no way of knowing if we really need that or not. Like that's not, that's not my job. And I started thinking through kind of like, what, what is the rubric that I'm using to evaluate this? And I may or may not fully understand the need for some of these things, but we had some time to get to know each other as a staff and I, I have a lot of trust in what you all are bringing us. We've been conservative in the past and we are in a position where we aren't cutting, which is different from a lot of local jurisdictions. And this is better. I like this. The process we've gone through in the comp plan, I've really been impressed and I've really appreciated how much that is tracking with the vision that we've given you. And like I can, I can see that the recommendations that are coming are, are very influenced by, by that vision and kind of what, where we want to go. And then I realized like, oh wait, the things that I like really was hoping to see funded, we've already done that. Like we've already seen those, those extra planning staff and we've authorized that and those recommendations have come through. So I just want to say thank you, like for, for that is a way to look through this. And I appreciate everything we've outlined tonight and I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with where this is at.
Thank you, Mayor. And that means, that truly means a lot. And I just want to also then reassure council with that trust is that truly anything that is a new investment that we're considering is something that again is responding to something that we, we've heard from. So an investment helps build the capacity to do the work of the city. And I really, we'll see where we are in, in December when I, but I, when I think thematically of what are we doing with this budget, it really is bridging from where we are today into the future of what we want Bothell to be. And so again, investments change the capacity of how we can get there, what we can try as we get there and when we get there, when we get to the destination. So there's certainly, it's great to get, to get questions or challenges or ask for more information specifically about some of these investments if you have them. Because again, if you feel like that doesn't, if that doesn't match the destination, but when I, when I thank the council too, the, the vision really does, is a helpful document because it paints the picture and we're, we're grateful. But thank you very much for the vote of confidence and we will, we will work every day to keep it there.
It also saves me from having to ask the questions like, what does a safety coordinator do all day and why do we need a second one? Which we probably don't need to spend time educating me on in a council meeting.
We'd send you out and show you.
I just want to echo what the mayor said. I also, I had a meeting with a constituent recently where it, it was an interesting meeting because they didn't like a topic. And they said, well, Bothell has a budget deficit, so we shouldn't do this because I don't like it. And I was really pleased that I got to say, well, well, we don't. We're, we've had a lot of careful work. So I appreciate that we're having a very different conversation than other cities. And, and that's not a reason to stop something. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Is there any reason why I shouldn't adjourn this meeting right now? All right, we're done.